Invite everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Hey, welcome everyone to the July seventeenth meeting. And we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Excellent.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Uh, we don't have a financial report?
No, I got it.
So we're uh still working on that. I had uh met with uh finance just a little while ago and it's uh getting close. Uh, do you want us just to skip that Louis or do you want us to approve the the bills?
You should uh authorize release a disbursement of money for funds.
Do we? Yeah, I wouldn't approve the financial report, but we'll approve uh we have a motion to approve the disbursement of funds. Second, I got a motion and second any discussion on that?
Yeah, can we do that without actually saying it? Sure, you have the power to do that.
I know, but I'm just saying.
You have the power.
But uh can I put a caveat that uh our town administrator reviews it? Before they pay it?
But he hasn't seen it either.
He hasn't seen it either.
I've seen it.
You've seen the bills. It's just the standard bills that we we want to pay our vendors.
Yes.
So I guess maybe we can start off in uh the the authorization for disbursement of funds uh.
We can we can disperse the pending uh if you want to call it that, but you can't approve something we haven't seen. We want to just.
Yeah, I know. It makes it tough because we wouldn't be able to pay uh uh authorized payroll for vendors, right? Everyone's getting nervous out there. Everyone's getting nervous. Yeah, so.
Well, we can authorize the pay without actually seeing. We can do those. Okay, that's that's number five.
Okay, we had a motion and a second for authorization of disbursement of funds. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we got a couple of us.
Can we hold up? We're gonna switch it up and HR is gonna go first.
All right, come on down Andy Rodriguez. A-Rod.
So if I could, I'd like to start off with the service words for the employees, please, for this last quarter. I don't believe this individual is here, but we still would like to recognize her. This is Abigail Sprouse, who's been working for Parks and Recs for five years. Congratulations, Abigail. Hopefully you hear this online sometime. Uh, next uh employee who has served town and citizens for ten years, Mr. Jeff Holter.
We'll get we'll get him up there uh as we get him on.
You can line up.
Yeah, you can come on down here and line up Jeff. Get your little film time.
See where he's standing. Okay, next up is uh thank you for your service, Mr. Matt Matthew Simpson, fifteen years, BP dollar. Next up is uh Matthew Nussel from EPD. Uh, this is the big one. Congratulations, Mr. David Evans, twenty-five years of BP.
Get a photo of those guys. Here, come right in front of us. Come right on and stand up behind you. Congratulations. No. All right. All right, turn around and give us a good smile. We're good.
And mayor commissioners, I would uh again congratulate all those employees that reached their milestones uh and move on to the if I if I could, the employee of the quarter. Uh, I'm gonna ask the chief to kind of um explain the individual. I will tell you that um I don't know how long the employee of the quarter has been going on for the town. Um, I when I read uh the nominees in the committee, there's one that stood out that really kind of I could I can't be explaining. It really shook shook us to the to the core um about what this individual had done. And if there was an employee of the decade, I think that would be more appropriate, but employee of the quarter at this time, so let the chief explain.
I would like to ask uh Detective Ed Donley to come forward. Uh, as the recipient, he did not know that until just now. Um. April twentieth of this year, though, Ed Donley was not on duty and uh he was, I believe, on his way home when he heard a call come out um of a an ATV accident in northeast. And uh Ed responded. Um, and when he got there, he found a fifteen-year-old who was not in good shape and Ed started CPR on him. Um, unfortunately, the young man did not make it. Um, and he passed, but Ed Donley, um even after doing all that, never met this man before, never met the family. He attended the service where he could meet the family and he just um he just did this department proud in everything that he did, all of his actions. He didn't have to respond, but he did. He realized there was a need and he knew that he had a skill set where he could help out and he did that. And as difficult as it was, um he still showed up for the family too and uh to offer his condolences and to uh represent the agency. So Ed, we appreciate everything that you did. Thank you so much.
Turn around here and smile with us.
Yes. Over to your left. Yeah, right there. Perfect.
The chief's in there. Get in there, chief. You're good.
That's perfect.
Well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
Are we ready for the oath of offices?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to have Officer Timothy Urban and Margaret Lofas doing the upfront, please. I just wanna tell you a little bit about them, so people can just bear with me.
Hey, well, uh, I'm sorry.
We'll start with Timothy. Uh Timothy was hired by the Department of Police Department on May thirteenth. He was born and raised in Delaware County, uh Pennsylvania, where he currently resides with his wife and three children. He is a graduate of Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Training Academy and he has worked uh part-time as a part-time police officer for different agencies within Delaware County since about twenty twelve. Um, he is currently um in field training with Officer Brandon Williams of our agency and both officers will have time compared to compliance in the fall. Um, so if you could just congratulate um. We'd also like to welcome Margaret Lofas to the agency and she uh began on May twenty eighth of this year. She was born in Belize and came to the United States with her parents as a child. Um, she grew up in Brooklyn, New York and is a graduate of Brooklyn College and has a bachelor's of arts degree in sociology. She um attended the Newark Police Department Police Academy and was an officer for them in the Brooklyn uh precinct for about ten, ten and a half years. Um, she had some family living in Townsend, Delaware and um so she purchased a home there and moved um a few years ago. She was working as a constable for the Applesby um School District before she coming to the police department. She's currently in field training with Acting Sergeant Jacob Brown and again, both will be attending compared to compliance training in the fall. So if you could welcome.
Okay, I'd like to swear you both in if I could.
So when I ask you to swear, I'm gonna go together and just. I state your name.
Hi, Margaret.
Do you swear in a firm? Please swear. That I support that I support the Constitution? For the United States? And then I will? Faithful and pure allegiance?
Faithful and pure allegiance.
The State of America. And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
A police officer.
A police officer.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
I'll graph these things down here for you and we need you to. Let's see, this is uh Margaret. This is the first.
You know, also at this time signing a sanctity of life pledge, which says that um in accordance with the sanctities or both as a police officer um and Maryland Public Safety Article six to do hereby recognize that all life is precious and valuable and pledge that I would do my job ethically to protect all persons.
Get Timothy to sign that and I wanna uh photograph you two. Do you come on in here and smile with us? We're getting in here and smile also. Ready?
Oh, look, I can see your head. Uh.
Like you're like that, so I still.
Unless you want that deer antler head.
Okay, Dawn, come on down. Give us some date.
Hi, everybody. Also, I'm Ernie Bob from Neighborhood Youth Panel. What a great day you're having.
You had a great day to come in.
I am not an employee of the town, but I'm so happy to work with the town.
Very good. Let's get my color. Seconds are clear.
Andy, can we make sure that all of that goes on the social media?
Usually Tracy handles the media. We'll put it on paper after.
I'm sorry.
Uh, the awards?
Yeah.
Okay, Dawn, we're ready for you, I think.
Okay, and I did pass down a public full uh fee report for you all and a brochure. Colorful brochure. So I just like to come in once a year and so and say hi and give it all what we're doing and uh you know, just express our appreciation for the town's support. Um, so the Neighborhood Youth Panel is a youth diversion program. Um, and I think all the commissioners they are all you're familiar with it. Um we've been working with youth in Cecil County since two thousand and youth in Elton since two thousand eight. And we've been serving hundreds of youth throughout the county and town. So we we handle, I have a breakdown of the number of youths we had this past year, past fiscal year. We had a hundred and twenty-nine, thirty-nine of those were in Elton. And we receive referrals from a number of different sources. Uh, a lot of them do come from the police department. Um, for diversion, so that that gives youth an an opportunity to avoid the juvenile justice system. So they they have their cases heard informally by the youth panel and then that enables them to not have a record from it. And we we have a panel of volunteers that works with youths. We usually have a police officer available that sits in and um you know, and helps us facilitate that. Um, and then we we work with them, give them a plan and they they do some things and they, you know, hopefully stay out of trouble. That's our goal. Um, and we work with the schools. We work with school resource officers. Um, we we get referrals from other agencies and we assist other youth-serving agencies um with some of our interventions that we provide. We we have a number of things that we do. Uh, we offer life skills classes. We do financial literacy workshops. Uh, we work with the youth at High Road School. Um, they they have a transition classroom that we go in and see a couple times a year uh and give them some tools that they need for their career that they're entering and also financial literacy. Um we we do some community service projects. And I think we've helped out with the fishing rodeo a couple times. Um we do um uh trash pickup right over by the YMCA on Route two seventy-nine. Uh, so we do a few things around the town. Um, we have a number of really good volunteers that work with us in the community. Uh we have Officer Devine that helps us out. We've been working with Angela Jaffe's from the protect, he's a protect coordinator from Elton Police Department. He's been invaluable um helping us get a hold of people. We've had our challenges the past several years. Uh, we do have um, it takes a little bit of effort sometimes for each parent, so he's been really great about helping us reach out to them helping me follow up with the officers, um get information if I need it, which is really helpful. Um so we've been uh you know, we've been through the pandemic like everybody else and we had some some juvenile law changes in the past several years that had made it more difficult for juveniles that are under thirteen to have charges, but we still provide services to them. A lot of parents wanna see their children held accountable and it, you know, they're willing to work with us, we will work with those younger kids. So um it's been challenging, but we tried to roll with it and we got back up to where we were before the pandemic. We have uh myself and another part-time staff and then the rest of our uh staff is volunteers that help out and these police officers throughout the county. We do offer services throughout the county. Um so um, you know, like I said, I just really wanna thank Elton Police Department, the town for your support, not just financially, but it's it's really great work working with y'all. We're in here all the time. Uh, and I'm always bothering Michelle, Kathleen, Tracy that, you know, have space to meet and, you know, it's it's good to have that backing. Uh, Chief is on our board of directors. Uh, she's really got, you know, her finger on the pulse of what's going on here and you know, she's been really great. So thank you all very much for that. Um, do you have any questions for me at all?
Dawn, we appreciate everything that you've been doing. Thank you.
Yeah, we welcome you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you get any feedback from the parents or guardians of the children you deal with or uh slash do you get any feedback from the participants? Because obviously you know, you could be in this program at a certain age and you know, move on further in life and you look back and this could be a testament of of what you all actually have done out of purpose and it's always nice to have something like that in your vows and say, this is what our program is about.
We get a lot of short-term feedback. Longer term, not quite as much. We've had, I have heard from some folks over the years, like I said, we've been doing it since two thousand, so that's a pretty long time. Some of those kids might have kids themselves now, if they do. Um, but you know, once in a while, talk to somebody that's been been in the program, find out how they're doing. Um you know, it's really great when you catch up with somebody who's doing well.
What about the parents?
The parents as well, yeah. Like I said, we get a lot of short-term feedback. Uh, one thing I didn't mention that we do, um we offer a mediation service where we'll have um called community conferencing. We'll have folks come in, uh if there's a victim involved, they'll come in, um use, you know, and their parents will come in and uh they're always across the board, very happy with the process that helps get to the bottom of all it's usually a difficult situation and you know, they hold hold each other accountable and, you know, prevents future problems. Um it's, like I said, it, there was a time a while back where the Cecil Wing wanted to run an article for like exactly what you're asking us, the longer-term feedback, like how are they doing now? And it was surprisingly difficult to to get a hold of people a few years down the road because people move, change numbers and for whatever reason, we we had limited resources to do along, but we do track our youths that eighteen months after they finish the program um just to see where they are and if they stayed out of trouble and ninety-plus percent of the kids in the program united in trouble again. Um, and that's compared to like forty-five percent of the youth in the juvenile justice system, same group of kids, first-time offenders. Um, so we're pretty, and that's been consistent around.
Last question now, the mediator, when you bring one of them, could it be one of us sitting here or today afternoon?
I I'm a train facilitator and the gentleman that works with me is a train facilitator. We um like I said, we have the program volunteers that work with the program. We welcome observers. If you ever like to come out to anything that we do, you're more than welcome. Um, we we try to have a police officer available if needed. Those usually get out of hand, but it it can't, if some of them have the potential to, um, so that's nice to have that if possible. Uh, but I I try to have at least one volunteer because they have something to add that may, we try to as facilitators, be as hands-off as possible with the mediation process and let the parties kind of sort it out themselves and and just guide it. But um, but a lot of times, one of our observers can really add something that maybe hadn't been mentioned or thought of. So. So I welcome you, any anybody here, if you wanna come out, including the audience. Um, you know, a lot of times that's how we introduce folks that might be interested in in volunteering or if you just wanna see what we do.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you so much for the update.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Dan Hanley, come on down. We have a bid opening on twenty twenty-three dash oh oh five Whitehall Road Pressure Reducing Valve Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, all and the commissioners. This is the uh public opening of project number twenty twenty-three oh oh five, the Whitehall Road Pressure Reducing Valve Project. The the purpose of the project has and basically involves Southfields. You know, it's the pressure zone for the new South Southfields area. And this is our funded.
You wanna tell them where the pressure-reducing valve will be located?
Okay, I can do that, yes. The pressure-reducing valve located on Whitehall Road, close to Delaware Avenue. That's that's where we started the area. It'll be like on the side of the road and um we we still, there are a couple of these pressure-reducing valves throughout the town, so that's the first one. So that's kind of where it's located at. The job is to, you know, it covers the excavation, covers the vault and it covers the um the actual pressure-reducing valve itself, so.
And and Dan, just to help us understand the pressure, so is the water tower gonna be creating so much pressure that when you take it over to the other side of the town, we gotta reduce the pressure? Is this what it is or?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. I mean, that's, I mean, there's, it gets a little complicated that way, but without without the PRV, the wellhouse four, which is designed to pump against a hundred ninety-five feet, will be pumping against a higher pressure, I guess, from the Thompson Tower. So this kind of levels everything off. So that's what comes in. So it involves well four and involves the tower.
Okay.
That, we feel it looks like we have three um contractors. We'll open the bids up. We'll see what they have to say.
How did you determine where it's gonna go?
Okay, C I. Okay, so we we worked with that. This is the, again, twenty twenty-three. We've been looking at this particular one with Southfield started. We just had to figure out what makes it upset, so. The KCI was involved and so they they figured it out together. They did the bid specs and things. First contractor is uh Eastern States Construction Services.
These Eastern States does the force main or the upper Chesapeake corporate center too. As a matter of information.
Eastern States Construction uh bids for the project of twenty twenty-three oh oh five, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three five oh zero zero zero. Second bidder is Lindstrom Exhibiting Contractors.
Have you ever worked with them before?
I have not worked with Lindstrom. I have I have worked with them, Eastern States and the third one, we'll talk to them in a session. Lindstrom Exhibiting Contractors bids for this project, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That's four nine seven, five hundred. Three. And three is Rybal Construction. We worked with Rybal. Uh, they installed the Route forty, we're moving to the Tolmane line, crossing on Route forty, which ties into the um um ties into uh part of the South Hill complex. They're they they're actually installed the line, so we have this. Rybal Construction bids three hundred sixty-two thousand, zero zero zero. Got three bids. Eastern State Construction bids three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Lindstrom Exhibiting Contractors bids four ninety-seven, five hundred and oh yeah, Rybal bid three hundred sixty-two thousand. That was your bids.
Do they now go through engineer for review?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's funny yet. We uh you'll go to the um engineer for review and I'd like to recommend that wherever the engineers decide, we have to go to contact with them, but you know, we they're reviewing right now, so we won't have the engineers real here.
Very good. Is this underground?
Yes.
This is, this is going to
Yes, it'll be underground. Yes, it'll be underground.
Of that road.
It's, it's more to the shoulder. That's where we pointed out to maybe a little bit, maybe a little portion of the road, but most of this is to the shoulder on the outside. I think that's a little weird, so.
Okay, so there's, there were restoration, very little?
Very little, very little. Yes.
Does that, is that included in?
No, because we, because we actually have to see like what would the actual excavation is going to be, then we can evaluate. Yeah, it shouldn't be, but the whole link itself, you're probably looking about, the entire length is probably about maybe fifty, sixty feet. It's not, it's not incredibly long here.
Well, we're going to have to rest that.
Yes, oh yeah, we'll get that. When it's all done, then we can do us a part of the evaluation.
If you wanted to come a little bit south of Delaware Avenue and do a, a nice lot that you could put that.
Right up my front, my driveway.
Right on the front. See, they already got a pullback there.
I was waiting for that.
It was actually great. I read his mind. So, Dave, we're not going to make a, uh, recommendation or do we need to make a re?
I, I would say, uh, I would recommend Eastern States, uh, contingent on approval by, uh, engineering approval by KCI. We don't have to come back again.
All right, thank you, without, sorry. We have a motion to approve Eastern State's low bidder for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars contingent upon the, uh, KCI, uh, review and approval. Assume move. Motion is second. Any discussion on this? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
We've worked with KCI, I, I'm sorry, Eastern States on a previous project, so we're familiar with that.
I know, I know two of the three contractors are both good, good companies. I'm sure the third one is a good company also. I just never. Ever knew.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, Dan, why are you here? Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Um. For catching.
Hmm.
Do we do that or contract?
Depends. Right now, we've got, right now, we've run some appointment. We're trying to do some patches ourselves, the little ones. And they get to be pretty big and then, uh, have, have actually, we said, probably a little reservation is double now, so it depends on the size.
What, what are you running?
Uh, we've run in a, a compactor and we've run in a little milling machine. It's, it goes on top of podcasts. We just started that back in July. So you'll see some areas which we're doing to help like catch up.
You know the cost with that? I'm just worried if it's, if it's more in front of the purchase. And the equipment needed to do it, um, so that we don't have to subcontract a bunch out instead of running a machine and do, you know, periodically all over.
Um, I, I can get back to the board with that.
Can you?
Yeah. Instead of getting twenty times in a time, we get like two times and we just put the rear raise up to do it, so.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, how many times do we have to run a machine? How many times do we have to turn it over to somebody else when maybe we could be doing it with the right roller or whatever? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep in mind that the, uh, repair the streets is, we can use how we use the revenue to pay for it, but if we do it ourselves, we have to buy capital equipment as a general fund and not use how we use the revenue money.
Well, that's, that's good.
So that would be an expensive, it's act bears.
Thank you, Lou. You're on. Anything today, Lou?
No, the only thing I would see, I want to, I don't have it a formal, uh, thing on the agenda, but the, um, the board should be aware that, uh, we're currently in the process of dealing with a contingent or a successor, um, trustee for the Southfields project. Board is aware that the town issued ten million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in special obligation bonds a while back. And trustee, uh, is the BNY Mellon, uh, New York Bank. However, Preston Hollow, the holder of the bonds, requested a successor trustee, which is Wilmington Trust. And we're in the process of putting the person to my right, filling out all the, uh, plethora of paperwork to get the successor trustee in line. We paid out about four million in exchange so far in requisitions, uh, for this construction to go for. But then all the requisitions will go to Wilmington Trust once they're appointed as the successor trustee and all the work is on, just to let you know.
That's why they wanted to change trustees.
No, I, I'm not familiar with Preston Hollow. Uh, uh, I think they're a company out of Texas. And, uh, for some reason, they have a business, uh, um, decision they made that go with Wilmington Trust and they didn't give me any reasons.
Okay.
But they have the right under the indenture of trust as the bondholder to, uh, have a successor trustee.
Very good. Thank you. I wanted to share with the board that, uh, Tamika had, uh, shown me some of the new software of Edmonds that she's been working with and, uh, uh, I know it's taken a little bit of time, but I think the finished product, when we see these charts and graphs, we'll be able to do, uh, a lot of planning. As we move forward, you'll be able to see, uh, truly, uh, in simple terms, more graphs that'll show you, uh, by category, uh, you know, more profit-loss information. It will show, uh, revenues versus expenditures, uh, by department. And, uh, uh, it's taking time because it's, it's, uh, you know, what, you want to make sure you're putting the correct information in. Because if you don't, then you get bad information out, as we all know.
Right.
And, uh, we've gone through, uh, uh, this has been a, a really tough year financially for us. I mean, by saying financially, from, uh, making the switch over to Edmonds, having, uh, uh, the death of a key person, a retirement of our finance director. But I think we've gotten, we're getting a pretty good handle on it every day. I'm following, uh, fifty emails going back and forth, uh, but it's all great stuff. Is there anything you need to add?
No, we pretty much, um, explain it.
All right.
Are the ARPA funds, balances going to be available, so, Jim?
Um.
With that report?
I would say, are you mean with the, the dashboard or you mean the ARPA report that's due this until weeks? But, okay, so I can, I could tell you what, what's going on with the ARPA. Um, there's a report due this, uh, for the, uh, last quarter, which is due, um, July thirty-first. And we should have that completed, I would say, no later than the end of next week. Um. That will tell, inside that report, you'll see the actual expenditures, um, that were paid with ARPA funds. Um, at the same time, we're working with the audit, excuse me, the accountants, Centura, who was going, basically they're helping me to match the book with the actuals. So that's what we're working on now. And this is one of the documents that I've passed around today to get, um, access to that ARPA money, because right now, we don't. Um, it's there. You, you can see when it comes in on a physical, actual paper in the mail. You can see it, but I can't see it in real time and I don't have access, so still working on finishing, getting access to that. Um, and so we, we should have it, I would say, access to the account by the end of the month. We'll have the report done by the end of the month. And Centura should be able to give us some, um, a lot, me and Centura will have, be able to give you some projections for the full fiscal twenty-four. You'll, you'll be able to see what, how, what we access them for ARPA. Um, I know it's kind of confusing because you'll see ARPA as a plug. But those are, uh, numbers that you're saying, okay, we expect to do this. And then ARPA, the report is the actual. So I would say by the end of, not this week, next week, we should have pretty much answers to all of the questions um, that we're, that you're asking. Yes.
Doesn't the ARPA, uh, funding and whatever related to that has to be some change by the end of the year, doesn't it?
It has to be earmarked, I believe, by December of.
Okay, we're, we're, we're in the same part because, because Rob Moss and Yado, a lot of people under the instruction of, but having great state and they had people there to let us know, telling all the municipalities that that should be done by the end of the year.
Right, we have.
Spending and your intent and all that should be done.
Yes, Commissioner, we have, so I've been working with Centura. And to ask you a question, yes, we have a plan where we know the amount to the penny that we're going to report in this report. And the next two, uh, the last two reports, reported, reports to ARPA, what we're going to use, what we're going to report in that report as a standard allowance. So we have a number. Um, we've been working on that plan. Uh, but yes, but we're going to take the, the, the remaining balance of the ARPA funds and just report a standard allowance. So that we can basically cash out and be done with reporting and we, and earmark the money. So we're going to, we never actually, the town has never really actually, in the actual report, reported to take a standard allowance. We've only put it in the budget as the, we expect to, but the actual, which is in the report, we never took a standard allowance. We never reported that. We only reported actual expenditures. But going forward, we're going to report the standard allowance, which will basically, uh, cash, will cash out or, you know, pull in all the money that we're able to use for ARPA and it'll be our funds, basically. And that's, and that's, and those are, um, we can do that. It's legal and it's in the rules that we can do that.
Legal?
I mean, legal, saying that it's federal, because you know, you have to.
It's legal.
It's required. Like you have to do things in a certain manner, so it's not illegal. And somebody will like, can you do that? So yes, you can do that. That's why I said that.
As a matter of public record, it's legal.
Thank you. Well, um, this is why I've explained it like this, in the answer to your question. The bank, which is the actual physical cash, does not match the book. And so that's what Centura is helping me to basically have it match. And so at the same time, if I don't have access, which I'm trying to get access, so that I can actually make it match. So it's all happening like together. You're welcome.
There's a lot of work here. A lot of work. The, uh, had a couple of things on my report. Uh, I, I'm going to, uh, hold off any appointments of the planning commission because I did not get the application in front of the board for them to see who Mr. Tom Jones, uh, who Mr. Tom Jones is for the planning commission member. Uh, so let me make sure that he fills, fills out the online application and that information. But Mr. Jones lives in Patriots Glen. And, uh, he has agreed that he would fill that position, but let's not do anything. Uh, Barbara sent a letter to Mr. Ray Glasky, uh, letting him, uh, aware that he's no longer, we will thank him for his service. Uh, but, uh, uh, but he will no longer be serving on the planning commission. But we need to fill that spot and we'll do that, uh, at the first meeting in August, which would be the August seventh meeting. Uh, also, uh, it's interesting that we're, we, we received some information on cybersecurity, which, uh, we printed out. And I, I wanted to make the board aware that last week I met with, uh, uh, a cybersecurity, uh, uh, individual with level five cybersecurity. And, uh, I've been, I've been pretty busy with my, my real job, but I wanted to get him in contact with Mike Devine, with the chief, uh, with the whole team, uh, to, to understand that this is something that we needed to move forward with, right? So the, kind of the ball was in my court, but I'm glad everyone, uh, we can print it out this information. When I sat down with him, it was, uh, uh, his, his credentials are, are pretty impressive and uh, we may have the most secure system in the world, but if someone took a jump drive and went from here to this other computer, it can contaminate it, uh, pretty quickly. And our system may be contaminated now. Uh, it's the craziest thing, uh, that how these, uh, the ransomware operates. Uh, but I think it'd be great to, I, I, I don't know what we have. I don't know, I don't understand our system as it is today. So I think it's something that, a- and I really don't know if this is something we want to have in the, uh, public eye about our security also. Uh, but I, I think that I will introduce everyone together and we probably should have some type of meeting, um, where we don't have three officials in the room and make sure that we can see where we're at with security. I don't think you can have enough of it. Uh. Jean Minter, can you hear me?
Hold on just a second.
I want to, I want to, uh, okay, perfect.
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. I, I, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring up. I wanted to make sure that you and Quinn heard me, uh, if you could. Uh, but I want to ask the board, this is something that, uh, uh, I've talked about, uh, for the last couple of years and, uh, I want to ask the board if, if we could do a, um, request for proposal. And where this is at is, you know, as I, I tell everyone, I considered myself the, uh, economic development guy for the town of Elton and uh, I would tell you that, uh, as we move forward, uh, after another year and a half, uh, I won't be sitting up here. Uh, but I would say that I'd love for us to at least work on trying to get that, you know, five-year economic development plan for the town so that the board will have some type of roadmap that we can see. We, we, if, to be able to see what maybe our future is. I could almost argue right now and say, hey, we don't need it with the growth that we're going to have with everything that's happening in Southfields. We've got more growth than you can ever imagine, um, happening at this time. But I think that we need to look past that and ask the board to see what this would cost. I don't know if it's a, 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 a thirty thousand dollar proposal, a fifty thousand dollar proposal, a hundred thousand dollar proposal, but I'd like to see if this is something that maybe we could get our planning department to put together something that, uh, would be just an overview. Uh, I've got some notes here, you know, would tell, uh, uh, what our strengths and weaknesses, our opportunities are, our threats, uh, just so that we have some type of game plan moving forward. Jean, is that something you could help put together?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that would be a chapter in our comprehensive plan update. And I'm just finishing up the request for, request for proposals draft today. And so we should be able to engage the services of someone to help update our comprehensive plan and economic development is a chapter in there.
That's, that's, that's wonderful. Is the board okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, you have to know where you're going.
Yeah, I think it's all necessary. It can't be stagnant.
What we have in the upcoming plans reflects what you're looking for.
Yes.
I'd like to comment that, uh, Jean Minter and I went out to, uh, a eight-hundred-thousand square foot building today and talked to a gentleman who represented the Ammo Electric Company. And, uh, they're moving their, uh, supplies. It'll be a supplier to a supplier. Uh, a very, very large enterprise they're preparing for out there. So I wanted to go out there and just introduce myself and Jean as, uh, at a planning.
Yeah.
Very, very big project.
Electrical supply company, wholesale to wholesale.
Yeah, wholesale, wholesale. I'm going to see if I can get a couple electrical outlets, but they would be.
Well, I'm sure they'll take care of you out there. It's in the building, the eight-hundred-thousand square foot building on.
Trump will grow.
The large warehouse.
Yeah.
So they signed a, uh, uh, lease a coup, I guess, probably been close to a month ago. It's a long-term lease and, uh, uh, it's, it's, it's not, uh, your normal warehouse. I mean, it's a wholesale operation. It's, uh, truly, uh, a job creator and, uh, I don't know the specifics. Did you guys get to talk to anyone? I was told.
We were, we were talking to him, but we didn't, uh, spend a lot of time there because he was in the middle of something. But, uh, no one may, uh, probably.
You'll get out there, I know that. Maybe I'll go with you.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, lastly, uh, Quinn, I wanted to thank you for, uh, I've been included on the emails, uh, trying to get these, uh, these fees paid for by the, uh, Southfield Development Group, uh, the multiple groups. And I appreciate you, uh, taking the lead on that and getting that to them. Uh, I've been a little bit in touch with them also. I'm putting a little pressure that, uh, that we can't really move forward until we take care of the, uh, backside of these, uh, uh, fees. And, uh, it seems like everyone's on board, uh, to make this happen. But I wanted to, uh, I started researching a little bit myself. And, uh, I, I think, you know, I, I, I guess we did a, we signed a, uh, let's see, a resolution, have it here in front of me. Reso- resolution, R six dash twenty seventeen. And I think in the future, I think we got a whole deal. And I think in the future, I think we gotta hold these developers a little bit more to task. Well, you could think I had it here in front of me. Oh, it's right there in front of me. Resolution R six dash two thousand seventeen. And what it, what it does is that uh you ask them for a deposit. You have the deposit and uh prior to them coming in and starting the process. And I think that we need to, we need to start doing that, then we won't get behind the eight balls much as we are on this, so. We have the tool in place. I think it's something that we could uh. I mean, it's, it's law in the town of Elton, so let's maybe, that's something that if you need our help implementing it, I think that we would. Uh move forward uh and implement it. There is a reason why we did it in two seven, two thousand seventeen. It gives us stability for these large projects to get some money upfront. And when that money's exhausted, then we ask for another pile of money until uh it's paid. But I, you know, along with that, uh I was looking at our fees. And I told the board I was gonna look at this before and I have. I think that when I look at KCI's billing hours and then I compare it to what our fee schedule is. I'm just worried that maybe we're not collecting all the dollars that. I think that we might be getting billed a little bit more or our line, we're not in line, so. I think that's a task that we need to look at. I'm not sure, I I know everyone's okay in the bills, I'm not worried about any of that. But I just wanna make sure that our schedule of fees. Are in accordance with what we're getting billed.
Yeah, or if I could jump in, our fee schedule has not been updated for years.
Yeah, we need to.
And it it really needs to be updated. It it was years. I think Andy was working here as the finance director the last time.
Yeah, so I I I don't wanna say that we get uh. I I wouldn't want KCI to help us with this one, but maybe we could, maybe we could get another uh third party to help us. Or maybe take a look at one of the other municipalities that maybe have updated it be, because I think we are way off. But I appreciate it. Thanks, Jean.
Yep, and we did mention to Ray Jackson back in twenty twenty one what the fees would be.
Yes. Yep, I think we we, I think the only thing that we need to do is get to give money upfront and uh. Sign these agreements, these developer expense agreements and then, and that's with all developers.
Right.
Thank you. All right, I don't think I have anything else to report here. Um Robert?
Well, I attended the quarterly MML dinner and had the Grace Labs thirty ninety lot with Commissioner Givens. Very nice meeting that having a grace ground is a fantastic crowd, they're doing good things down there. The uh, the mayor, Mark. He couldn't stress enough how happy all his citizens were with pickleball courts and. And I told him I'd come down and take a tour with him one day, we'd have lunch. I'll let you know when I'm gonna do that. Uh the other thing I wanted to bring up was many people have been asking me why the fence was covered and then why it was uncovered. And plus simply, as I mentioned, they're bad a lot ago, it had become a sale. And it was being pushed out into the street by the wind, so it's as simple as that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Earl? Yes, sir. Um I I attended uh the neighborhood uh mini center last week, uh. Right, the basketball camp over there, it had about twenty-six kids. Uh, yeah, the camp turned out real good. Um I observed a few things that need to be addressed over there at the uh center of number one. We need to add more cameras into classrooms, so uh I mean, I was looking at safety part of it. So uh I'm not sure whether we have to input something in their budget or whatever it is, but it's safety is always number one on my. This, so cameras.
In the classrooms?
I talked to Mary and she said that would be great because they do need more cameras in some of the classrooms where the students are being. Uh classed and everything, so that's one. Uh number two, I spoke uh about there's uh adding speakers either. On the outside of the building, in case of emergency, never know who's in the building or whatever. But we need a speaker in the gym, gymnasium area as far as for announcement. For from.
What do you, you wanted to add what else?
Uh a speaker like in case there was a fire or something, you wanted to evacuate the building and.
Like an intercom system?
Yeah, well, that's number, that was the next thing, add on an intercom system. At the desk that could provide a speaker from the outside in in the gymnasium. Number three is they have to. Uh where they're sitting at and the door, someone's at the door because the door is locked. They have to go over, go over and I think within six feet, they need to get that switch moved over to. That's where their computer is, where they actually just sit there and look. With the uh button. Those are the things that I've noticed. And the last thing is, I know this is on the county side, but. The basketball court outside, if they try to use rest and everything, it needs to be redone. We might have to get permission from the board of education, cuz it, that must use it.
That's not ours.
I know, I know that, but is there a way that we can ask for a request to maybe either. They can upgrade it or we can do something. I mean, that's a, that's a uh request, I guess. Because the kids are using it for part of the recreation over there and. Even though it's on that side, I know that board of education that's not using it, so I would like to either sit down and talk to somebody personally or you could do it.
No, I mean, I could say. And uh but I don't know if they pay for it.
We had, we had a gentleman here, one of the two, the black top.
Right.
Of the metal, uh which, which one, uh the uh. Maybe we can reach out to him, maybe he might.
Yeah, the cost of that was, I think, blew him out of the water, so.
Yeah, this is a smaller pad, he might wanna do this.
Yeah, so those are just a few things uh that I have and I think that's gonna be it. Charles?
Yeah, Earl, a lot of those things as far as the enhancement communicatively, you know, I mentioned to uh. Mary before, but there's one thing here, I don't know about putting a camera in the classroom. Uh we'd have to find out what our rights is for that because. Uh you have people, um you know, community agency or whatever, you just can't put a camera on anybody without permission.
I think they do have something.
And that court over there was put, I I do remember specifically. It was back when uh Jimmy Cross was. Mayor and who wants plans and go to march to the streets. Uh that court was put over there because he was organizing a basketball game. To take attention away from what was happening down here. And so that was all done, everything was well, but the court remained and what was happening. During the times when Boo Street went up, they had drugs over there. And so the drugies were out on that court and plus the people living in Elk Manor were complaining about the crowds. So the basketball court went down and the pad still remains, even though they still are using. But it's a nice little court and to get permission, it could be used for something. Uh yeah, pickleball, yeah, well, there's overlap, man. So that was that. Uh my question, uh Rob Motzmeier, you brought up because I was gonna ask about the many pains. Down here because, you know, we write things online each other. Then when you look, then you see things are different, just what is going on with that.
Many Hanes?
Yeah, what, what, right now, what is what? Cuz it's, the the fence is now, it's terrible when you look at it. And I know.
Sent a bill to uh Sandy Island LLC, but they haven't paid for it.
And then I think somebody mentioned the fact of how much money we have in towards uh. Data, but we haven't seen a lot of reality.
Well, the reality is that the town of Elton's paying four thousand and change for that fence. And uh even though we built Sandy Island LLC, that's who owns it, uh they haven't responded to us. But I think Ingrid sent a email out that she was gonna come to the board and talk about.
We asked her to come to in front of the board to present her uh letter and I don't know.
Well, not the, she says. But she was gonna bring uh uh some fellow that was possibly interested in developing that property. When she's showing up yet.
I spoke to Mark. Yeah, Mark. Virginia last week and uh it it appears. That there's uh an agreement in place with the state for him to acquire the property. Now, that's, that's the only detail I know. Uh there's nothing official, uh that came from him and uh. Uh you know, a little bit prior to that, we asked uh uh Ingrid Minahan to come in. And uh ask for the letter of support in front of us so that we could all ask her questions of the questions that were getting asked. Uh because we really don't know, it's uh it's uh. And it's in the state of Maryland's hands. Uh I'm very disappointed in the state uh has not. Uh put a little pressure on their, uh I guess it would be the, the. Their, their. Person that has the loan with them and uh it's very disappointing. We're in a, in a real bad. Position here and in a bad light and I know Lewis has been sending email after email after email, so I know that. We're trying to get answers, but it's falling upon nothing. Now, John, do we have any?
Yeah.
I, what, what could we do? I mean, uh. We're not gonna, we're not gonna put a new roof on that thing and spend six uh uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're not gonna do that.
Right, I I think probably the most productive approach is to push on the state to. Keep the pressure on and 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 moving.
Maybe you can send one more email to him, one more letter.
Well, that was gonna be my question. Lewis, has he gotten any response back from anyone?
Actually, I did send a letter to DHC Day and they didn't respond to me. But I think, I thought the mayor talked to somebody down at the MML.
I did.
I don't know if he talked about that or not, but do you actually. Met with somebody down there then.
Uh and and he's gonna be coming up here in a, in a short period of time, but he didn't firm up a date, but. Uh I I will shit, you know, there's only so much I can say, but uh. I I believe that there's a, an agreement in place. But I've also made to, made the state very. Made them very aware that we're not happy how long it's taken, but it's not their fault they haven't got a deal offered to them. And and uh the many Hanes still own the property. But what the problem has been is the state hasn't been moving as fast as we wanted to move.
They did take action and it's public knowledge that they did garnish his wages. So they did take some actions.
What, what was that, Kelly?
The state garnished Dennis's wages, Minahan's wages for the loan, so they, it was recent, only about two, three weeks ago. So they did take a little bit of action.
So I think that that's what's, what's helped with the process. I'm glad you said, I wasn't gonna say it.
It's public, so I.
But is, but 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 is there a, you know, you send the email, you send other letters of communication. But is there a voice that you can actually talk to?
Uh.
You understand what I'm saying?
I had a chance to talk to a run the miller when I was at MML, she's the lieutenant governor. But uh she didn't know anything about it, so I didn't get to Westmore yet, so I don't think I'll talk to her. I'm too far down the food chain. Maybe the mayor.
Uh, well, listen, I see what Charlie, where Charlie's getting at and uh I I believe there's movement happening. But it's not moving as fast as we want, um. I I don't think we can do it. I, unless the town wants to take action and and and. Put a new roof on the building and and remove the fence and put a lien on the property, but I promise you, we're gonna lose that money. I promise you, we'll put a new roof on it and the lien won't be exempted. That's it, that's the only way you can secure the property with that. That's the only way we can move the fence. So we, no, no, it's not, it's not, um.
I think the process of doing that would be like years, because I don't, well, I I don't expect. The state who's owed a bunch of money on that property is going to be cooperative with you tearing it down. And I don't think.
Structurally, it's not, it's structurally, it's still a secure building is what the industry.
And and I, I perhaps would have been implying to take them to court, except where you're gonna be number thirty-seven in line. So, you know, it's like having, no, it's not like, they're, they got a mortgage and they're, they're upside down.
There's other lien holders in place and if we come in, we're, what John's basically saying is we'd be number thirty-seven. And yet we might, even though we, it 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 would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. It's an.
I wouldn't offer it.
We can't do it.
And lastly, uh Alicia, are there any strikes in the farmer's market? I don't know what your, that is, so. I don't know what you've done thus far. I know it's gonna be a process, but has there been any bidding or anything then?
So the work that I'm doing right now is around getting electric down at that, at that location. And I just received word that we got some BLT grant money that I'll put in specifically for that. So I'm waiting on a quote and a um scope of work from AUI, so we can move forward with that. I think that will give us a lot more leverage. As a town to get vendors down there. I know that our original vendors have been there, have taken a job elsewhere in the middle town. Um so I think that, and so we, I know there's some, some questions around it from a community-wise standpoint. And nobody wants to see it better than me, Michelle. But um I think that once we can get some electric down there, I think that we have some more leverage to entice and incentivize. Vendors to come down there.
Thank you, lots of man.
Jean?
Speaking of buildings, I want to ask, are we ever gonna do anything with this building that's just sitting there? Uh like, are we gonna sell it? Are we going to demolish it? Or do we? I mean, I'm just wondering if we need it for expansion of this room, but not addressing it.
Uh, wait here. Well, I think we, we, we talked about it. I think we should just put it up for sale.
We talked about it, but we certainly haven't made a decision. I was concerned on whether or not we were gonna. Need more space for this building.
I, I remember and the three of us were sitting on the board, these two were not, and uh we bought that building for. Future expansion.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And then uh when the wastewater treatment, I wasn't involved as no longer mayor, but the wastewater treatment plant came into place and. I guess the town decided to lease that building to Severn Trent or or whoever it was to. Uh have an office there.
Correct.
Then it evolved into the Elton Parks uh building. And uh now it's a, a vacant building, but everyone tells me there's a lot of uh. Uh water damage, uh there's uh other issues in the building. I would say we, we list it and so it as is, uh I don't see how we can, there's not enough room to make a parking. I think that was. Brought up by Chip and I spoke about that to one day. There's not enough room to put any parking there.
What if we demolished and kept it for future growth?
And then I thought that Tommy was gonna be maintained and utilized for, well, these are some type of records, I'm saying as well.
Well, now we have the armory that has.
Yeah, the armory is better than that place, I guess.
Lou, can we ask you to give us a firm recommendation on that building?
Sell it. As is, and then we'll see what happens. That way we at least we'd have an opportunity to gain some financial benefit from it. Rather than expenditure.
Yeah, I I think we're looking at, uh we can probably get uh eight, nine hundred thousand for that building.
Especially with the interior, right?
Uh, listen, you guys all good with that? There wouldn't be any point in putting a little bit of money into it to raise the, the value substantially?
Why can't you do a question like that? Because I don't know what cost it would fall.
Yeah, I think before we sell it as is, we could, I think if we put ten grand into it, we get fifty out of it.
But you gonna put that money? But you gonna put that money in there in that building how though? For what purpose?
Well, if there's water damage, it must be a roof. So I think we. Fix it up a little bit. You're gonna increase the value. You're gonna get more back than you put into it.
I can just mention that the police department did look at it and we had put in some, we'd had um. From McCoy came out, windows all need to replace. That's really where a lot of the water damage is coming from. There is asbestos on the stairs leading up to the second floor. Um, there's a, there's a lot going on in there, uh just. Minimally, we were looking at just being able to maybe move our archive records and our records department over there, so some employees. And just for basic, like not cosmetic, not really anything else, because plumbing's all out and bad in there too. We were looking at, uh, I think our estimates were. Little say not give too, but I think it's about a hundred thousand, just minimum.
To get it to where you could get in there. And that did include plumbing?
That did include plumbing. We were doing plumbing and we were doing some electrical upgrades because we were gonna move some of our, like our um. Softphone technician guy up there. We're gonna move some of those offices and just get upstairs, because that's what's up there, just offices upstairs and then downstairs. But there's restrooms upstairs and downstairs.
How do you, how do you sit for uh expansion? That's what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, well, we we definitely are gonna need the room. Um, we have put in for um. Some grant funding to try and get us some equipment and stuff to for upstairs to make it a real training room. Um, and then if we can get some some office space up there, that'll. That'll get us. Right, we've kind of talked about that. It'll get us.
The answer is the police department's gonna have to take over this one.
Eventually, yeah, eventually.
So either.
Long term.
Either town hall moves across the street into the armory or. Uh, maybe we look at the P N C building, uh whatever we do, it's gonna be uh. Uh, they they their due diligence ended on Monday. And I I. I don't think they, I don't think they accept and took it.
I just wanted to give you an update, just we had a little bit more information. That was probably two years ago.
Let's uh let's put it for sale. Good? See, what we, Brian, we don't have to accept the offer. We can just. Do we have any idea on it right now as is? I I would say that we should be able to get. I don't know, maybe one twenty five to two hundred thousand.
That sounds like a good appraisal.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, anyone on the?
Is that the decision of the boards?
Sell it.
Or if you, I gotta have a decision if you want something done here.
We want it sold. Or or bring us the offers.
So my do list.
Jean, you had a comment?
No, I'm sorry. My computer made a weird noise.
Okay, Alicia, come on down.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, thank you for asking about the farmer's market. I appreciate the the questions on it. I definitely wanna see something happen with that, with the funds that have been put into it. I know. I know. Um, the other thing is August ninth, we have Elton Alliance Day, and it is an event that is a block party. That's what it uh marketed as. And we would welcome everyone to come down to that. Um, we're hoping to have somebody from the police department represented there because. The last couple of events, they've had water guns where the kids have really enjoyed that, and this really is a focus on the families. The only vendors we're having are food vendors. That's it. No other vendors. The rest is about fun for the family. So we're getting a mood bounce. We're having hula hoops, uh sidewalk talk, things like that, all things to engage the family. So that was my first um report. And then secondly, I'm here on behalf of the Elton Alliance Design Committee. Which both Jean and Pat Opel serve on, I'm sure we're all. I wanted to give an update based on the last reports that we had. First, the design committee had originally noted that there was mold on two buildings. One oh six West Main and one twelve West Main. And we understand that since that report, it was determined that the stain there is not in fact mold, and we were incorrect. And those stains have also been removed, so we appreciate the work towards the the committee's um mission there. And our apologies, deep apologies for the misrepresentation of what that was. I want to also thank Dan Hanley and his team. Um, and we talked about the fence around Minihans. And they took that request and they put the fabric up. Now it's been taken down. Um, and they partly had to take it down for safety reasons that stopped between North and Main, because you couldn't really see up North Street. And then because of them previously mentioned reasons, but we do thank them for that. And I also want to thank D P W for cleaning up the municipal walkway. One of the things on our report was that that walkway between one oh six West Main and one twelve. Was really cluttered, lots of leaves, lots of debris, um trees overgrown, and him and his team took right at that and they cleaned that up. So that was great. Um, the dead birds have been removed from one twenty West Main Street. And those uh those windows, which that was an eyesore, so we're thankful for that. And then the unattended weeds at one thirty two West Main Street have also been cleaned up. So lots of things. Going forward with the work that we had put forth. Um, I walked the district. There may be other things that I didn't see um prior to coming here, but. Those are at least the things that I noticed. And then one other um apology is that we were advised that the codes that we shared during that report. When we identified some code enforcement issues, that those codes were actually residential codes and not commercial codes, because commercial codes don't exist. So our apologies again, um we misrepresented that those code violations um were accurate. And we've since been advised that they're not, so we went to all of that stuff.
Thanks so much.
I want to apologize for not knowing about the commercial code. Because I'm part of the committee. And that is something that I probably should have brought up. Uh, it, I could be wrong, but it tells me like we don't have the totals. That we need to enforce ordinances. In this side of the community. Downtown. And I'm perplexed by that. Um, I don't know what we need to do to address it, change it, add language, whatever it is. It should have, also if Chip would be still here. Chip, are you there?
Yes.
Do you have anything that you can um enlighten us on about this?
Well, I mean, basically, we have no ordinances to address that, so the ordinance would have to be. Put into effect, but I I believe it's very difficult. Uh, to address issues like that. I think John Downs could address this better, but I have spoken to him about that.
We can take a look at it. I mean, it it, to some extent, it gets down to. How much of town resources do you want to incur to enforce weeds growing and stuff like that? You know, I mean, it it.
No, well, I think it's a little bit worth weeds. I, we're talking about maybe, you know, structure uh problems. Broken glass or debris or whatever it is that the property owner is not addressing. Um, if we have no uh way to enforce. Our requests, well, you know, for them to work.
I I think we could take a look at it and. Do sort of a triage kind of of an approach where we're looking at. More major things, as you say, more major things. Where there's some likelihood of. Actually, whether it's fine, well, that sort of thing, um. Some likelihood of getting payment for all the expense and labor that we incur. Give them a fine and they live in. Some other state and it may be real difficult to to.
Yeah, but the points are generally the way to uh really push a property owner to do what they need to do. Um, if not, you're just saying, well, never mind, just do what you want and see you later.
Right, I think one of the frustrations of the Elton Alliance, I don't mean to disturb you. Is the burned out building in the middle of town and the town's inability to have that uh. Facility corrected, fixed up, repaired, restored, whatever. And get rid of that fence. Because I can imagine the people that come downtown, whether it's Alliance Day or any other day. That's a eyesore in the middle of town and uh. I would think that uh anybody downtown that's a merchant or a visitor or the alliance. Uh, has a degree of frustration about why we can't do anything. And I'm not exactly sure what to do because I'm not an accountant, I'm not an attorney. I don't know if we can go through some condemnation or eminent domain or whatever, but. As the mayor pointed out, and I think John Downs pointed out too, is we'll be thirty seventh in line because there's uh probably a mortgage on that property or. Some encumbrance by the state for the loan that they have, which complicates it significantly. So I mean, we have a lot to treat that. No, I'm talking about, that's an example of an eyesore in the middle of our town.
Well, maybe we can uh reach out to the city of Bel Air, Michelle, and. If there's, see if they have a uh building code for their businesses. I would say. Have degrees would be another one uh.
For all and for all these places.
I'm also happy to, I'm happy to work on that as well if there's.
Yeah, could you get that?
I love with the main street where the base.
I I've tried to implement a discussion on citations. We haven't moved anywhere on that. Um, so. There's a lot to do. It's a lot more.
Been a problem for years. It's almost like we need an H O A downtown.
Yeah, but I feel like the town attitude is. Something we can do. So we'll just move on some.
It may seem.
It feels that.
Yeah.
It feels that way. I want to get in. I want to want to be proactive here and uh. Get something going, whatever we need. Well, this board will give.
Lou, get us the torch.
Whatever it needs.
No, I can work out. Do you want me to reach out to, I mean, I'll be with some of the other managers. In Bel Air and Havering Grace and Frederick, so I can, I can happily ask. Am I asking like for their code enforcement list like?
Yeah, you know, wh- whatever situation problems you're having in there, they have to have something.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jean.
Um, Alicia, could you explain uh describe to the board the the two grants that you just re- that the alliance just received?
Yes, absolutely. So the B L T grant we were awarded money for, um and we specifically put in for. Uh, funds for farmer's market revitalization, additional farmer's market revitalization. As we talked about earlier this year, um, we have a business in Elton that has offered to also sponsor some work done. That's gonna be done down there, and actually I'm working with Mike, Mike Pace, a pace that are signs to get some signage for you guys to finally review and give input on. Um, but tho- those funds also will be coupled with additional funds for us to support downtown beautification. So whether that be uh flower, big flower pots that all the businesses get that will match, um whether that's upkeep. That's up to be uh determined yet. We were just awarded that money. And then the second grant that Jean is mentioning is Project Restore. So we can put in for three hundred thousand dollars for Project Restore. Project Restore is basically a grant that helps revitalize vacant building. So I went forward to some of the vacant building owners. And said, if we're able to put a request in for funds through the state, is that something that would be of interest to you? And I had three businesses that took, three building owners that took me up on that. We did not get three hundred thousand dollars, but we did two hundred thousand dollars. So we were very excited um as a first time grant. Um applicant for that. So we have a committee that will be meeting in the next week or two to look at those grant applications. Based on the funds that we receive and will be awarding that money out to those building owners. Closer.
Um, Jeanie, um, we have a lot of dead trees downtown. Is it a, is it a matter of what we're planting? Or is there, is it just the tree, only have so much life and then they have to be replaced?
Um, I would probably say the latter, uh more than likely, they've um. They ju- it's just time to replace them. Uh, urban environments are a challenge for for trees to survive in. But they they have lasted a long time and at some point you have to replace them. I have to replace. Landscaping regularly around my house as it gets too big or too woody or too old or something. Um, so you just have to replace it and um. Just make sure that we keep it watered and um.
I think we should discuss it because you you don't want the trees to change. Anesthetics, and then you don't want the trees to block the cameras.
Mm-hmm.
That we need desperately. So we have to find something, go find balance, because right now we just have a lot of dead trees looking at us.
I know, D P W's taken quite a few down, but I need to ask those more, and I I do believe that. If the camera locations need to be adjusted based on tree placement, I think that would be a discussion. But I I was in Chiloma Park uh at a main street meeting last Thursday. Those trees are gorgeous. They're huge, and I mean, that's on the brink. I literally had one light in Maryland and one in D C. That's right in the city. And they were beautiful, so I don't know if it's.
Streets the same size though?
They seem to be, yeah, I mean, I'm no expert, but and so maybe there are certain types of trees that flourish in this environment. Um, and any questions, I'm happy to reach out to other main streeters.
My last question across this. Do you have a speaker on the North Street side of your building?
No, because we don't have light poles with outlets to. Adhere them to.
Why does it have to be on a light pole?
Well, it doesn't have to be on a light pole, but that's where the main street ones are and exploration earlier this year. Um, Delmarva will not allow us to put them on any of their poles.
Why can't we put them on every level?
Well, I mean. We could, I mean, we would just need permission to do that from um from the board and also historical.
Don't you need them on the North?
I would love to have one on the North Street side, and I think we still have one or two sets of speakers that have not been installed yet.
Well, they should be up for the podcast.
That's.
And if you can get one on that side of the street, because we have activity, but I know this. We don't have the uh.
So I do think that I know the mayor's talking about the historical district and and I think there has been some opposition about. Adding that maybe to our building because it's a historical building, but sorry, I could explore it again.
Find the historical.
Isn't that, isn't that what you were?
Talk about that during the break time for the speakers on.
Building, we'll put it up there.
Do you want it up there? We just need to have somebody install it.
I think whatever you have.
You will not have a clue for me, that would be.
We have been waiting for speaker systems for years.
I will tell you.
I'm sitting.
We do have them, and I mean, the ones that are installed obviously are not playing right now. We had lots of issues when we had them playing. Um, we also need a specific equipment to have them played, and I actually have Grand Conference out for that. But I also have a local business owner that has offered to donate me, to donate to the alliance, uh a laptop and we can use that. And then we'll just purchase the music system because we have to have a specific music system too. But having one on on the North Street side, if we have it attached to the alliance. From permission from the board, you guys own that building.
It's a long building. You got plenty of room.
Why I own my building, but I still had to go for the historical board.
I think.
Were you able to get as as a speaker on your building?
No, all the speakers on Main Street are on the light poles because they they already have a left ear.
Could you take a picture of what the speaker looks like and where you think it would be at on the building? And then we'll send it in to 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 Jean or Chip and. Uh, we'll see if we can just talk to the historical board to make sure there's no hiccups, but.
How often would you use it?
We would normally, actually, they would be playing all all the time. I mean, not.
I was gonna say, because if you only use it periodically, you could rig up a temporary. Uh, you know, speaker. You don't need to mount on the building, you don't need it four or five times.
Yeah, they're not that big and they're tool set, so um the goal is that we have been more inviting downtown, so the music is playing every day during the day. And then certainly during events, we would be playing more event like music, Cinco de Mayo, et cetera.
Well, I was, what goes to my mind is running a conduit from the service panel somewhere in that building. To the outside, that's that's where it gets complicated. Sticking a speaker on a on a concrete or masonry side, that's the easy part. It's all the electrical stuff that goes with it.
Yeah.
It's really complicated.
Happening because we're talking at the very end of the back of our building where nothing is going on right now, so. I don't know what that would look like. But it would certainly be welcome because we have a lot.
And could you meet with Alicia and uh take a look, uh see.
Where it can go.
Where it can go. All right, I appreciate you.
You have to get Jerry.
I mean, the podcast is.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town? Anyone on the Zoom meeting, anything for the good of the town? Harry, now all in favor of Clint George's meeting?